So. But it's not recorded on live hearing.
All right, appreciate everybody's time this week. We've had a very happy week. As you know, we've been talking about getting together on these plans for several months now, different things popping up. This one's a little different than what we've done in the past when we went department by department. I think it's getting back together on those. What we got right now is some really big rocks where we need direction from the board on which way we need to head so we can finalize the plan that's going down the street. Some things are just updates and others will be providing information for you to digest and then come back together and make the final call. First thing I'll do is update on historic changes to the homestead exemption of the county, as you recall, at the vote last year. So this year's the first year of our new homestead exemptions. We're getting comments from a lot of seniors to go back and look at the exemptions they have. So back in August of twenty twenty-two, I had a meeting with the tax commissioner, our state delegation, and the vice chair of the BLC. We got together and viewed existing exemptions, got to know, learn what they're all about, how they. One thing we found though was that in order for a senior to get the exemption, they had to know about the exemption, then they had to go apply for the exemption. And some of those require auditing from the tax commissioner in order to make sure they're in compliance with them. We talked about alternatives to that and did investigations on that. We met with the two members from the Board of Education. They went over the proposed changes that we're going to lay out. And then the state delegation had to go pass local legislation. And it turned out they had to get ten pieces of legislation passed, which created ten ballot questions that. All ten of the ballot questions passed with at least sixty-nine percent approval. So that came to effect January first of this year. We started back in June of twenty twenty-four. We sat down with the tax commissioner, tax appraisal office, Justin and Daniel and I all got together, talked about the exemptions, how they. What they meant, made sure everybody understood what they meant. We had a follow-up meeting with the group. About two months later, and then we also met again last week on the twenty-first, or yeah, twenty-first, the follow-up. Everything's on track to have them implemented. We gave you a copy of the exemptions that'll show up on your tax bill. So the state minimum, which right now is two thousand, and that could change regardless. I pushed to change that state homestead up, but that state homestead, whilst the state minimum is a hundred percent funded by the county. Our homestead exemption will go to three thousand dollars starting January first of this year, and then to eight thousand on the twenty-third of that. Anybody who's sixty-five or older will have an automatic assessment freeze, and if you're seventy-five or older, you get additional ten thousand. There'll be a lot of credit showing up this year before, just kind of the update. According to the tax commissioner, tax appraisal, they're all set to go. We've got people standing by if they need help, keep them under, as of right now, they're somewhere off track and will be in good shape. Little wins in the House Bill five eighty-one, even with the changes to the homestead, well, that's coming up now. Commission has a strong record on taxes. Twenty twenty-one, we did a point five four percent drop in the millage rate. Twenty-two was a eleven point seven drop, twenty-three was a twenty-three point four drop in the millage rate, and twenty-four was an eight point eight percent drop. Despite that, I had a lady who's in her early sixties, already retired. She called me up and said, why did my tax bill go up so much? So I went to look in and sure enough, she lives in a twelve-hundred square foot house, built in nineteen eighty-four. We've dropped our tax rate eight point eight percent, yet there's a little chart in her packet there that shows the history on that. So even with the drop in our millage rate, the dollar amount of taxes she pays to the county was up twenty-one point eight percent. So four hundred something dollars when you count the school tax and that, yeah. And that's because her assessment went up twenty-seven point six percent in one year. My estimate is about a third of the homeowners in the county see that, because they go through full assessments every three years. So that's what the state legislature's hearing from is people saying taxes are out of control. Throughout the state, there's a lot of local government authorities that kind of depth taxpayers' comments on that type of thing. Hiding behind no bill rate change while the dollar amount goes up. So that's why people go to the state legislature, which is why we got House Bill five eighty-one. So House Bill five eighty-one had to be passed by two-thirds majority of both the House and the Senate, signed by the governor, and created a referendum. Which passed sixty-three percent in the state party. Donald Trump only got fifty-one percent from the vote. In the county county where we had eighty-six percent turnout, which was number one in the state, we passed sixty-four percent for the referendum. So basically what it does is create a floating homestead exemption, and what it means is that your assessed value that you pay taxes on can only increase by the amount of the inflation according to a selected index, which is most likely going to be the CPI. Twenty twenty-four is the base year. It's my understanding there'll be no increase for twenty-five. So whatever your value, assessed value in twenty-four is, will be your assessed value in twenty-five, unless the former revenue changes their mind on that.
Unless you have additions to your property.
So there is a value reset upon sale. So if somebody sells their house, that new value becomes the base year. And substantial change in property is captured as well. So you add pool, you add onto your house, that value will increase by that amount. So if you look at, there's a chart in there that kind of shows what that same homeowner would experience if House Bill had five eighty-one been in effect in two thousand eighteen. And basically she would have had a one point eight percent drop in her tax bill overall. Counting the county and the state and the schools as values. There is an opt-out. There's pretty specific rule on how you do opt-outs, one-time opt-out. Right now, that deadline is March first to have a packet into the Secretary of State saying we're opting out. There's currently a bill to extend that deadline, but it is not signed by the governor. It's not even made it through any committees yet. Today, what we kind of got to look at is what our voters have already told us, what the actual impact of this would have been to services for these years. If we look at the two thousand eighteen to twenty twenty-four, which includes looking at the numbers, taking the fund dollars, and then the stewardship of our millage rate. Based on all those things, I don't think we should opt out. That's kind of, we need a little direction from everybody. On whether we need to start that process or not. In order to stay in, we have to do nothing, just sit back and watch the fireworks. There's some other changes that are in the bill as well. So the estimated tax bill, how your assessment notice is either going away or being modified. So sometime in March, we'll have to give a estimated millage rate to the tax commissioner to put on that assessment notice. So like in previous years when we were rolling back, the estimate was based on the previous year's rollback. So in our case, it was overstated for like three years in a row with that estimate. If we turn in an estimated number and then exceed that number, there'll be a additional disclaimer on the tax bill that says the county county board commission didn't do what they said. It's a little more legal saying, but that's basically what I'll put on there. There's changes to the sales tax, or excuse me, the sales ratio calculation, which is done by the former body. You don't hit a certain number, you get penalized in your digest. Basically, no county in the state hit that number because of the way they were calculated. So they made some changes that should help with that. They're going to modify the three-year lock for appeals to apply only if you win your appeal. So in the past, all you had to do was file for the appeal and you didn't have to do anything else, and your property taxes were locked for three years. So now you have to win your appeal in order to get that lock. And then you have to participate in your settlement conference in order to get reductions in your tax liability in order to get a lawyer fee. So again, people would file to that level, they'd never show up, and they would still be eligible for getting their lawyer fee paid. So those are very strong. Most of that came from the tax assessment award that was sent out there.
Can I ask a question?
No ma'am.
Are you going to explain, oh, about?
You can talk to us afterwards, but not back and forth right now.
Okay, you said something about your attorney's fees? Okay, that's interesting.
We also have the ability as a county to, if all the cities stay in House Bill five eighty-one, we have the opportunity to offer a one percent sales tax referendum to the citizens. There's been some communication that this is set up to allow us to make up the revenue lost from House Bill five eighty-one, and that's not the case. If we were to go to that, that is a dollar-for-dollar reduction in property tax. So if you collect a million dollars, we calculate what that is in a millage rate, and that comes off as a rollback, just like the local option sales tax does now. So that's a dollar-for-dollar reduction in property tax collection based on how much we actually collect in that previous year. That will be a five-year program that would have to go back to the citizens after five years to vote on again. And we would require the local legislation to have it set up. If y'all have any questions on House Bill five eighty-one.
Help me understand the relationship with the cities. Can they opt out?
Yes, every government authority can opt out.
So it doesn't impact the county?
Other than if they opt out, we do not have the ability to offer up a property tax relief on the sales tax.
Okay, that's going to be in that trend. They cannot pass that sales tax, so.
No. It's similar to what we do with SLOST. There'll be a population split amongst all the jurisdictions.
You had a communication.
Yeah, we met as a group at the end of December. They're getting their information together, go back to study, we'll probably get back together here in the next few weeks. Just kind of see. There were some, some of them had started digging into the numbers yet. I had a meeting with another city who's looked at them. I think we're pretty close to everybody thinking, but I don't know for sure.
I was going to mention too, just for historical fact, Kim, I don't think you voted, or you were on the board when we first started lowering the millage rate. Because the, as I remember, at the beginning, it was eight point four eight, and we dropped it down to four point, whatever the changes. So we've got a strong history of lowering that millage rate.
That's why we have a lot of room. I really think we could, some of the capital expenses we've done over the two thousand eighteen to twenty twenty-four, if we had lost that, didn't have that revenue, it wouldn't impact the service. It would have slowed down some of our bodies.
So John, if only that's linked line, if the school board opts out, how does that affect our?
It's no effect to us on that local option tax.
Now, didn't you say that on the tax bill, there would be some delineation or some kind of asterisk next to theirs?
No, only if they don't hit their projected millage rate and they turn in.
Okay. All right, so if we hit that estimated millage rate of assessment, does that still require, if we, if we, I guess if we mess up, go over that, we have to have a public hearing next month?
No, so all that still stays the same. This is just, this is just another step in the process where we have to tell what we anticipate millage rate to be. As long as it's under that, we don't get. I don't know if it's a panic here, just negative, negative comment on the tax bill. The tax hearings are still the same. If we don't hit the calculator rollback, we still have to do that.
So even if the school board opts out, their taxes, I mean, they don't have to give any notice on their tax bill other than the assessment's different, because the tax commissioner will have to keep up two separate sets of books, one for the school board, and one for county and the cities.
Right.
And that will show up on the tax bill, correct? As far as the assessed values, how's the cap?
Yes, they'll have a higher assessed value times their millage rate than what the county would have.
Okay.
And they would still have, if they don't hit the rollback number calculated by the tax commissioner, they would do that in July. And they'll still have to have those three hearings.
But you're asking my opinion, of course, I, my first experience with millage rate was some fifteen years ago, and I always, it was a backdoor tax increase, because I always, I mean, the commissioner, who was the chairman at the time, he's still alive, I won't mention his name. He always harped, we never raised the millage rate, never. And I kept saying, well, why aren't our taxes keep going up? So it's been a berm myself for a long time, so I'm glad to see that the legislation reached to this. And I don't agree with how it went back. They should have not allowed opt-out. They should have made everybody opt-in, or either giving everybody a longer period to opt-out so that they can live under the new rules for a couple, three years, and see how it's going to impact before they opt-out. But making this short period to turn around and opt-out is, in my opinion, of course, I'm not in Atlanta, so I don't know what's going on up there. But I think it was wrong to have such a quick opt-out window. But I'm in favor of what they did as far as limiting the increase.
Yeah, I'm in favor of it as well. And I will say about these assessed values, I've sat on the organization board for a number of years. You know, people sometimes forget that, you know, the economy in our area does drive these sales. It's not that the assessor's not doing the job. And our, you know, community has got such a high standard and such a great, you know, place to live here, I guess, to say it in short words. But, you know, those drive home prices. And you might go to a neighboring county where the same square foot house would be valued much less because of that. And so sometimes it's a catch-up based on what's happening in the market.
You know, I remember the first time I talked about this bill, I was at somewhere talking, we were talking about it, and it blew my mind, confused me a lot, that's for sure. So I'm in favor also, but at the same time, I do feel there's going to be a lot of questions about it in the future. So we probably need to think about planning some, some kind of, you know, information procedures so that citizens can come to us and, or whatever, we need to do something about it, for sure. It's definitely a lot to take in.
Hold on a minute, just move on.
Very good. I said like the census will not be per se with any appearance by changing the minds of the people.
You need to take official action on the meeting?
No, it's just a link to census. I say we're automatically, if we do nothing, we're. Next item is courthouse having improvements. Started meeting with PPI in early June of twenty twenty-three. This is part of our, as we moved out of courthouse, everybody knows that these are, if nothing else, a different coat of paint, changed that color. But it's.
There's a lot of nineties in that courthouse right now.
It is very tired. There needs to be some changes to be more conducive for judicial functions within the courthouse. So we started that back in June of twenty-three. We went with PPI because they had the most knowledge of the building, and they did the design on the extension. I think they were even having the original expansion back in the nineties, and that was the original. They started with proof of the concept development phase in June of twenty-three. So PPI worked with all the stakeholders, had meetings with each group, they kind of went through, came up with graphs on how the floor should look. Final concept came out in October twenty-three, and we did a after the stakeholder review of that concept. So we're pretty close of what we were going to move forward with in October twenty-three. We had a little slowdown, distraction with a couple of things, and kind of put this on the back burner. One was elevator modernization. We had to go and do some work on the elevators to keep them functioning and make codes. And we spent a lot of time with probation for a while. So back in August of twenty-four, we got a design services quote to take this concept into actual architecture and engineering. I took the concept from twenty-three back to the group. There've been a couple, there's been a change in the chief judge. You can see the document, you see the concept plan and the signature from all the stakeholders saying this is, we're comfortable moving forward with this. There may be slight changes that have to occur as they dig into the details. Some mechanical rings that might be moved, that may not be possible. There still could be some changes, but the overall concept's been adopted by all the stakeholders. So we got verification that our August twenty-four quote was still good back in first week until the, I screwed it January. So no fee change paid in August. So where I, I want to make sure everybody's comfortable moving forward with that. We have funding available from SLOST, and then our capital fund. A lot of range of design services contracted board for approval. And we start working on getting a construction manager, Riz, on board to kind of help process it. Just want to get the process to be pocketed.
I guess the obvious question I would have, or maybe not the obvious question, but my question though is, I've been curious, just what the, I would go to the bottom line, you know, what's going, ultimately cost? And also, is it going to be phased, uh, provocation, like different, different floors, or it all will be done at one time?
So there will be, they'll take, there'll be an order of process based on what the architect thinks is best. So my guess would be going to do, probably we'll get it straightened out and go to second floor or third. There'll be, the whole courthouse won't be in disruption.
Because they'll have to maintain the court system and business as usual.
So they'll, they'll do a lot of work on that, working on the engine, on the schedule, what they're going to need when.
Could I go back to that, from what we know on bottom line, not on the contract.
Yes. So if we had a estimate done back in twenty-four, and it was like two point seven or eight for construction.
Will that allow the front doors to open?
That is not part of the plan at this point. They could open it, but I don't see the staffing and all that to keep the security plan in place.
I'm just hoping it's shared.
That's what we left.
Well, I always said, you know, that if they were concerned about the safety of the judges, but at the end of the day, they walk out the door, wash their car or something, and somebody really want to get them, they don't have to go inside the courthouse. They can catch them there at the walkout.
But based on input, we'll have a lot more efficient operation of court services. There will be some security upgrades in there as well. We should be in good shape. I think there's fifty-two thousand square feet in that building, which is in line with what was requested when they wanted their courthouse. We should be in good shape for many generations.
Lot less than we're gonna.
Ever since Leroy's gone.
Lot of.
All right, so we'll move forward in that direction, there's no objection. All right, now we'll talk about something fun. All right, to red.
All right, so the big dollars attached to all of this, I just want to get that out of the way now.
While I let him say this.
And we don't exactly know what they are, but we have three significant part, either design or construction projects. Not quite construction going on right now, just kind of giving us where they are. So OVP, let me just kind of walk everybody back briefly. The master plan from the mid-two thousands was to have sixteen courts here, plus a show court. Then you have the Hermency Michael courts. The decision was made by this board, essentially all tennis is going to go to OVP. Hermency Michael, once that happens, will be down in Pickle Hall Central. And so the plan here was to take, we currently have eight tennis courts. We have designed, going right now, that will go to twenty-four tennis courts. So you would have essentially three groups of eight, one on either side of the current one. The current design also has expansion of significant infrastructure. You don't have to build courts, you have to make sure you don't erode them away. So there's a lot of drainage issues, there's expansion of the stormwater detention system, expansion of parking. There's also a building that would go there that would include additional restroom facilities, storage, and some potential office space for tennis usage. So right now, we are, it's under design, we're at ninety percent design. It's going through the permitting process with planning and code right now. Once that is done, we'll look to go out to bid. We don't know what the figures will be at this point, just by experience of the last five years. Whatever you think it is, just add twenty percent or more to it. And then we're going to work to get that invited. I quite frankly, do not see us having the ability to do everything right now on there. And so we'll have to see what we can do now versus change up later. But that's, that's the plan now, and the idea is ultimately we'll have twenty-four tennis courts. And then we'll go back on Hermency Michael and do a retrofit of those courts for Pickle Hall.
Just basic question.
Yeah.
And the current SLOST went out, both passing. Did we say in that twenty-four courts?
No.
There's nothing mentioned about that. So when you say twenty-four courts, that's including the eight courts they got currently, correct? This is just addition to that.
Yeah, when that SLOST went out, we were going by the original, that's why we got sixteen. So in order to convert Hermency, we have to do some of it. The goal is to make sure tennis is not negatively impacted by that, by the extension imagination, the number of courts. We get sixteen, then we get, this means those over here is again. So it's a thing. Sixteen plus four is twenty, and they have two junior courts. So ultimately, there's twenty-two courts for shutdown. Any tennis courts over there will have a split, or can't. All that kind of depends on the plan. We'll talk a little more about SPOSS and then have a little bit.
What was that, that SPOSS amount?
So we had, uh, about a million and a half in SPOSS for tennis courts and a billion and a half to do the exit. Some of, some of that dynamic exchange.
With the creation of converting the Hermann C. Michael, how many pickleball courts come out of those existing tennis courts?
So we have four full-size tennis courts there now, two pickleball courts, two junior tennis courts. So it'd be two, please, so what do we get per tennis, right, four, four per two?
Currently behind the gym at Hermann C. Michael Park, if you were to square off those fences, um, then one tennis court could potentially be four pickleball courts. So instead of four tennis courts, you could potentially, if you change the fencing, have a, you could have sixteen pickleball courts. Plus the ones that are already existing. So that would be plus four more, give me twenty pickleball courts at Hermann C. outside. Um, and those, of course, behind the gym are also have lights, which is something we don't currently have.
So the goal here is to kind of work our way through, through this, get, get design, get it permitted. Um, see what the bids come out. It's, it's gonna go through value engineering or probably try and have to remove some of those off of the final destruction costs. And then, uh, we'll bring it back to the board unless there's some directional change, um, for consideration at that point. Comments on OVP or tennis? All right, um, Heritage Park.
Wait, 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 where is this gonna be built?
Uh, that, that structure, it would be out there in that area.
Okay, you just didn't mention it.
Yeah, sorry. That's, that's the building I talked about with the restroom, the restrooms and the storage. All right, Heritage Park, um, similarly, you know, you've heard, especially at Town Hall, some conversation from some of the, um, equestrian horse community. And so it is currently, similar to OVP, it is currently under design by SPG. It is also in the ninety-plus percentile completion on there. There, a lot of what is gonna occur out there, it primarily deals with some of the grading issues and drainage. There's a lot of concern out there for that, so. But, so we kind of have it parceled out to sort of four different areas. I'll briefly run over, um, kind of what they have in the zones. So zone one, we're, um, the entranceway improvements, a lot of paved parking, restroom inclusion, grading, paved entrance from four, paved forty-one, paved parking, restroom, restroom building. Under the, uh, part two is called the uncovered outdoor arenas, that would include grading. And these arenas would deter irrigation, but not any kind of special flooding that would go with it. Um, part three is identified, that's sort of the RV parking, the horse trailer parking area. So what we're proposing on the front end would be grading and stormwater improvements on it. And then we're preparing hopefully to work with G, uh, to get a secondary entrance, um, egress, exit point for Heritage Park there. And then area four would be the covered arena area, which would be arena improvements, which includes the footing for the horse to a horse standard. Uh, increased electrical capacity, new LED lighting for the arena irrigation for the, there's a significant amount of irrigation that has to occur on the, uh, for the horse footing. Uh, again, grading and drainage along with that, and upgrades to existing restrooms. Uh, there are also some additional storage and ancillary buildings shown on the plan. Um, I'm gonna work it in other areas that would lend itself to more, um, equestrian oriented events. That's the overall sort of nutshell where we're looking at. We estimate the aggregate, um, for all, all this is probably about six million dollars worth of capital investment. Um, again, we're hoping to pare this down with sort of the recommended first steps of it that would go into it. There's also, I mean, everybody knows this, you build a park, that's capex, then there's the opex side of things, so we have to operate. There's a, so once we get there, you know, this will not happen right away, but now we have to look at how a specific horse footing is going to be taken care of and maintained. We don't have people on staff to do that right now, that's a specialized. So we'd be probably looking at contracting that out or finding a vendor. A lot of that will be dependent on the usage or the amount of, um, value to that. But we'll be leaning on some of the equestrian community as far as some expertise. But again, this is just from my perspective. We, we are not Conyers, and if we wanna become Conyers, if everybody knows Conyers is like the Olympic horse parks. That is much more than this, and that requires a significant refocus of things. But I think what this can provide in SPG, um, they're, you know, the lead designer is involved in equestrian events, and so has an eye for that sort of thing, so it was designed that way. And so I think this would get us a pretty good cut, I think we could approach about by our citizens, so.
Yeah, just throw me, it's not just the horse using grid either, there's the, there's the mountain bike group, there's, um, Core Age and FFA. So a lot of stuff impacts improvement for all of the groups.
But a lot of drainage work has to go on, and grading is really expensive. Um, but it's not the end.
Do we have money in SPOSS, any, any money in SPOSS for that, any of this stuff? Do we have some capital to benefit?
Yeah, I think we're gonna kind of talk about sort of the grain scene of this. We've identified funding sources for all of these projects, kind of to get them moving, some SPOSS. Um, well, that's why we reserve funds and capital for these kind of events too. Is there anything I missed? Have any questions? Heritage?
We mentioned irrigation, assumed that we're still using wells for, uh, uh.
Everybody good with this? Wendell and Benny Dawson Park. All right, so on the easels, we have these, you have at least the new ones to pack it. So you see on the left, that was the original concept. That was, um, developed by WNA engineers, that's the one. So in a nutshell, you have, I divide this into kind of three components. You have two gymnasiums, each one would contain four basketball courts. You have your fields, the rectangular fields, you have lacrosse fields, then you have kind of a show track field. And the third one is the field services building, it's the oriented, the northern part of the park, hanging off plantation drive. So that was just the original one. We went with, so Lowe's Design has taken that over the past few months, we've worked with them. They have come up with, they have redesigned it, done some, they have done some reorientation of the fields, gone for some optimization of the overall, um, interior layout for improved circulation. Um, and then come up with, we've asked them to come up with three concepts for what we'd call Phase One. And we're, we're orienting toward fifteen million dollars of initial, initial capital for Phase One. So from our parks' perspective, what we've received is essentially the, the number one priority, and you see this here, various times at OVP's field space. In part because we have, um, significant use interest in all our youth sports, but field space especially. Plus rectangular fields gets us the most bang for the buck as far as customization and the ability to divide in different ways. So the three different options are, oh, kind of going off script, I'll walk up and kind of explain the difference. So this all represents essentially eighty-eight million dollars worth of capital investment in today's dollars. This is not what it did, but that's just kind of the, the world we're living in. But so option A, which they're proposing, is show one, two, three, four fields. The bank of parking, which conforms space-wise to the fields available. Restroom, storage facility, uh, pavilion. This also has walking trail around the existing, um, facility. It also includes all the infrastructure up through here, this is an interior roundabout, and then a second access point to plantation drive. The cost of Phase One, again, this is back at Napkin, based on their estimators, is sixteen point one-five million dollars. Does not include the exterior road improvements. That is something we're currently doing right now, was settle on the concept, which we're close to. We're doing a traffic study, and we're gonna have that designed to conform specifically with that. We are looking to make sure we have two access points, including a control one at the, at the primary entrance. Um, none of this includes any of the indoor gymnasiums. Basically, right now, they're estimating quite frankly, and then they could do less than this, but seventeen point six million for one and eighteen for another. That includes, it divides it by the, um, space here, it includes the parking space behind grading. And then up here, the county administration facility is, they're showing thirteen point five million. And I think we can do that for, for less. Uh, we have done interior programming on it. But if you recall, this is, uh, one of the important things that we're doing as far as consolidating our field services buildings. And then the interior network, and then rough grading of the entire site to do balancing, um, field, that sort of thing. So anyway, Phase One, or Option One, I should say, is essentially sixteen point one million dollars. Phase Two is very similar, except the dif- main difference is, instead of providing the walking trail path, we add two additional lacrosse fields here. That is fifteen point nine-five million dollars. So instead of four fields, you get six fields, you do not get the paved walking track path. Um, that's that option. Then Option Three includes eight rectangular fields, so essentially the entire bank of, we have two banks, two banks of, um, quad fields. This would be all eight of them, two full parking fields to accommodate the additional field space. That would be eighteen point three-five million dollars. So other things that have to go into it at some point in the near, and they'll have to come through different funding, additions to the field services building. Plantation drive has to be, it's not really approved, has to be rebuilt, um, to allow the heavy truck traffic that would occur as part of the, the road department's crew. And then the exterior, uh, improvements to the road itself. So those are sort of where we are right now as far as our initial, what Phase One is. Our goal is to do everything at some point over a future time horizon, but what we can do going forward. So remember, we're still decommissioning or have not decommissioned the actual LAS site right now. We're still on track for that December of this year as part of the, uh, overall discharge line that goes to the middle of County Rivers. And once that happens, we can move right in to get into construction on this for whatever we need to be Phase One. But we think this approach, I, I have my opinion, which one I think is the most maximization. But the, uh, we think this would be the official, um, optim- optimized for the parks program. But anyway, that's a lot I have right now. What questions do you have or comments? Chairman, do you have any additional comments on that? I drove you into all these meetings.
No, I think it's, it's a good start. I would say Option B, from my perspective. Collaborate on one of them. Cause you're getting that whole, you're getting six fields and all that parking in that first phase. And when you start Phase Two, it'll kind of be out of the way of all that other stuff going on.
Well, I'll say this, some of this stuff, walking trails are really expensive also. Um, we may have the ability to do some self-performing of something like that with our road, like that could be a winter project for the road. Um, whether we do it as a asphalt trail or a mult, you know, multi-use path or something like that. But what I understand from, uh, we need everything for the community. But what I'm hearing from a real need perspective is field space. So getting six fields, I think, really sets a cool, move, move the ball significantly forward for us versus four field spaces.
As far as funding, we're right at fifteen million, is what we think at this point.
No, that's what makes the difference, because I like C best, but it's eighteen million, and I think C was, I like C as far as the, I would just get the end of it.
Plus we're watching B, if you get into it and you got extra money, you could easily go over and hit those fields. The only problem with more fields, you gotta have parking, which is where the drill must be. Just putting aside downs, not that they did, it comes down.
So the overall, no, no, no engineering, real engineering has been done on this yet, but the theory is that the whole site will be graded to, to balance out. Um, there's some cut or some deal that'll occur. But you'll, we'll pull, so the shade areas, what, shaded is, is the final grading, that sort of thing. But the whole area, even the unshaded part, will be, will be graded and moved forward so that, you know, we can bring some in. There's some, there's some ponds there that the hunters have to be, will have to be filled in, that, that sort of thing. A lot of this is like geo testing, that's gonna have to occur out there. Um, yeah, it's, it's, and I know everybody's been out there, that's a big piece of property.
I was gonna hear that. My first, um, cause I come after you, it, it, cause I'm watching, you know, my ranch here. Um, and I've got, I've got to see how far we're behind. I don't mean that to be negative. You know, I moved here and I can, you guys are the, you know, the long term, but I can remember cutting grass at the Bogart baseball field, which I didn't have any problem doing. There wasn't a lot of available anything. And, uh, we've come a long way, but I can tell you, coming out here, that they can't, I don't know that they can take much more. I'm out, I'm out here on Sundays, sometimes Saturdays, cause my granddaughter plays in one of those, you know, travel type teams, but they, they play out here a lot. And I would say whatever group decides on the boat, the more grass fields we can get to start off with, to me, that is the critical part. I can get in, I'm waiting on the buildings. We'll get, we can get to the buildings, y'all know we're waiting on the buildings. But it is so crowded out here. And I think all that's a good thing, that we've got families, and this is a family issue, not, you know, county commission so much. We gotta decide it on what to do, money, that sort of thing. But when you come out here and you see so many families enjoying out here, but it is packed. I, I am very worried about deputy that's out there, and that, sometimes they got two or three, you know, helping folks get out. And, uh, so as soon as we can get more grass fields, we, we will be doing the community a great service. Um, so that, that's my take, cause I see, I see that, I see the grass field, I think, and I'll just kind of slightly talk about the buildings. And we got, we got kids playing. And we got, we got kids playing basketball that are scattered all over the place. And, and I'm, I'm gonna say this, you know, I talked to Michael Ransum, the, the new chairman of the school board. And most people in here know the issues I've had with the school board, cause I was on the school board a long time ago. And I don't agree with them on how they, they've acted about the use. But I think it opened my eyes to, to the vulnerability that the parks and rec is dealing with the school system. If they shut down, and Michael told me, he's, I asked him, I said, Michael, in the best of times, which I hope we have good times, could your growth inside the school system shut down our usage? And he said, yes. So if we don't get to looking at best of time situation, that we're, we're getting more courts, they could easily say, y'all can't use that today or tomorrow, we gotta do redo this. We don't have any backups. So the kids don't have any place, they're scrambling around trying to find practice courts now. And, and I may disagree with some folks, but you know, you can't say, the county can't say legitimately that the travel teams that are made up of Oconee County kids don't count. They do to me, and they ought to, the, all five of us. Because those parents are paying property taxes just like the ones who are signing up. So I'm not saying we can fix everything, but we got to, we got to look at how we can increase our indoor. Outside, I'm, I'm, that's the first thing, but, but we got to look at the, the indoor. I've also said that, you know, I'm, I'm looking at not just spending taxpayers' money, but try to find some ways that we can raise money. And my son-in-law Philip Benard, he's on the, the, uh, foundation. If we're gonna have a foundation, let's raise some money. Don't just have a foundation just for the name's sake. Let's try to raise some money. I brought that issue about selling advertising. I'm all for trying to find some other ways to make some money to help cut the cost. I do believe that whether it's grass or it's buildings, let's look at tra- at, at tournament play. Tournament play to me brings business into the community to where they'll spend dollars at local businesses. I don't see a downside to it. So anyway, that, that's, uh, one last thing. I asked Melissa last night about that bond, about the Costco run. If that's around half, half a million, can we not use that to get some of this stuff going and do bonds? I mean, I, I don't, I'm just throwing it out, if it's not worthy or whatever. But it, it is gonna cost more the longer we put things off, it'll cost more. And we're gonna be right back talking about the same things where some county commissioners have gone, I wish they'd have done it. So anyway, I, I just, I see it, uh, I appreciate what the parks can do with limited resources. So that's my two cents right now, right now.
I mean, I think the plan would be to have these buildings designed, you know? There's, nothing is on there that we don't feel we need to have, or we have heard from the community that we want. So, you know, we, we have what I would say we have to have for parks now. And then what we really need to have for parks in the very near future now, on, on the building side. So I think we identify that, um, and then when we figure out the funding source or can't figure out the funding source and finding. That's, to me, that's the perfect kind of partner with the foundation is to identify, you know, have them identify where exactly what it is on their, is their project and for, for the fundraising on the advertising side of things. And then there's, you know, the field services building is something we have to have because we have expiring leases on facilities too. So there's, there's, there's several jigsaw puzzles that are sort of coming together here, but we're, it's a funding issue working through.
Like that, I mean, it's expensive, I mean, uh, there's nothing inexpensive about it. And that's why I, I, I throw out the issue about bonds. To me, it, it, this, this really opens up, I think, visitors coming to the county, spending money. All these small businesses would benefit, uh, by influx of weekend users. They come in, they, they gotta eat, they're going to eat. I think it would also probably spawn some quicker hotel motel issues coming in, cause they see the crowds. And I think if we get into the travel issue, I think you're gonna see, people be glad to get out of the planned metro area to come over here. We're set up, we're, we're set up about as good as having Costco in those other stores right next to the medical issue, medical facilities. All you gotta do is go look at car tax.
So look, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I, I, it's just, I think we've got an opportunity to capitalize on folks coming from outside for a clean usage. I mean, it's not, it's trash, yeah, there's trash, but it's kids playing. And I'll be honest with you, anything we can do to help kids in Oconee County market themselves, I, I think we ought to try to do that.
So I've had this conversation already with Lisa, the chairman, independently, but again, this is a two hundred and forty acre park that would be coming online for usage. This will, will require a relook at how we operate our parks, um, both from a personnel and a, again, an opex reallocation of things. It'll either require more personnel or a shift, and then we're, we're, we'll work to whatever right approach is on that. But I think what this does do to, to your point, it does open us up to opportunity that we just don't have right now. And I think we'd be honestly foolish to not take advantage of it at that point. I'm also a little skeptical of some of the economic impact analysis I see on sports tourism, but I think some is always better than none.
Yeah, I'll say there's, the thing is, we have a lot of options. We'll see that more when we get talking sploshing the capital funding. So just in, you got heritage and OVP projects, right? Once we get numbers on that, maybe you'll have the option to say, well, we're only gonna do this much of those two projects and ship this other for something else. You have the, what we're trying to get to now is of the three phasing plans, what, what's consensus of the board moving forward? Then we can dig into those numbers a lot deeper, come back with a schedule. And as we get into grading, uh, plans and, and engineering, some of that may shift where we can leave more. Again, once we get the capital, some stuff you don't have, maybe not.
I just wanna back up something to talk about as far as bond. I know, you know, we're very concerned about being in debt to anybody. But the point of function of a bond is, of course, it's a voter referendum, it's not a decision that we can make. The, the, what is appealing about a bond issue is that I'm beginning to address, you know, pressing issues today, the Austin needs today, but the future needs. But the other component that this community was not very forward-looking when we initially built the old new high school, the new old high school, whatever you wanna call it, that referendum failed. It was a bond referendum that voted down by the citizens. Well, you know what the school board did? They paid for it out of current revenues. So the citizens that voted down the bond referendum on high school ended up paying for it through their property taxes. But the people who moved here later did have to pay for it. But they enjoyed the benefits of what those citizens that turned down the bond referendum got paid for out of their tax revenue. So the, the thing about bond referendums is that, you know, I don't like being in debt. But at the same time, the future users of these parks will be able to participate in the payment because of the, uh, they'll be here to pay for it. So that, I'm not advocating, I'm just saying, that's a, one of the aspects of bond indebtedness that, uh, for governments is that it allows you to go ahead and address current issues, but also the people prepared for the future. And that future referendum participates in all the funds we're paying for. So keep that in mind when we start talking about sploshes and all of that, just depends on. But it has to be, uh, support from the community. I mean, if they, if they don't want it, that's fine. Uh, a bond referendum, if it's voted down, then that's, they have, so just keep that in mind. But as far as the options, I'm agreeable with whatever group wants on as far as which option, A, B, or C. Yeah, I'm just kind of looking through the three options. It, it appears that option B would be one of the better ones. But then you do have the option on C to be able to add those additional fields and the parking, if the budget allows. So, and if you masquerade the entire site, then you've already got that part covered in the initial fees.
And the, uh, entryways, you have two entryways really to come in. I mean, I know you got it on C and on B as well, but you still would have everybody going to one parking lot on, 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 uh, B. And you have two parking lots on C, that would be a little bit better for the traffic flow, I think. I mean, I'm just, you know.
Yeah, no doubt.
Yeah.
Man, I think C is the, oh, the best option. Is can, is that three million dollar delta, can that be accommodated is the question.
I mean, I think if we can find a way, I think, I just wanna say C, I think, I mean, it's got a little bit better option, I think, two entry fields plus different entrance for parking. But that means it, move on with that.
So if the gyms were added to it and you were looking at a bond, so if we had fifteen million, then. My numbers is total was about around sixty million. So you'd have about a forty-five million dollar bond referendum.
If you did both buildings, it's the same thing, right? Now, one reason there's two is kind of phased. I was very disappointed in the numbers we got. I would expect to be able to get one, one gym with those six meters. Justin, Justin's been counseling with me through that.
And this would be the biggest, uh, project in Oconee County ever been marked on, I think. Of course, there would be some options of possibly phasing, you could do some external cores, they problematic here with weather issues. But if you built a slab on the second building, built it in spex, then it might really become a constructed building.
Has been thought about with those little bubbles you blow up. I say, oh, we got consensus to, uh, a little more detailed analysis of option B. So we'll work on that, get some better numbers hopefully. And then come back to the final funding plan.
All right.
It's just eighty-eight million dollars.
Um, yes. All right, sidewalks and trails, um, I'm gonna walk, feel indulgent, I'm gonna walk a little bit through history, and their pun intended. Um, all right, so, so we adopted a trail master plan in twenty twenty-three. There were, there were three primary areas shown as priorities. So priority one was a large connecting network trail. Um, and that is part of which is currently under construction right now. That is essentially fifty-three up from four forty-one all the way to Rocky Branch, building by Dawson Park, up through Malcolm Bridge, Mars Hill, over to Daniel's Bridge, and then back down to fifty-three. So that is kind of a very large circular motion. Priority two is the, um, rail line, rails, trails essentially, Clark County to Morgan County. And then priority three is portions of, uh, the Appalachian, middle of Oconee rivers, which are really called Blue Trails. These would be kayak access points and different abilities to access the river. Um, so our comprehensive plan has a lot of language in it about connections of people at schools and parks and connectivity. Um, first leg of this is currently under construction. And project one is two point zero eight miles along Hog Mountain. They're actually moving very well on it. Uh, the next segment, if you go down the prioritization list, would be from, from Dawson Park to Oconee High School, which would be three point three nine miles. And so that's sort of where we are right now in, in our current state. Initial feedback, and you guys probably received it more than I do, I mean, has been rather negative on the Hog Mountain Trail. Um, there's been intermittent traffic delays during construction, some of the other issues. It's not apparently obvious that this is part of a bigger network, you know, uh, you know, the sidewalk to nowhere concept. And then, um, but also the comprehensive plan does support, and trail master plan supports this larger pedestrian bicycle connectivity network. And so I think the question before the board is what level of priority do you wish to give to? So we're going to finish the trail. And the best time to, um, discuss the trail is not while it's under construction, it's while it's in planning. So this will complete all the ones that we currently have under design. So the question I think before the board is what priority level do we give to the remainder of the segments? Uh, we have non-programmed right now under any current spot. So this is a two point five million dollar project between, uh, with T-Splosh and capital. And so, not, not our program currently for more, um, policy directive. Do we wish to continue, uh, to program these or pause these for a moment? I, I can't do that correctly.
Yeah, so I did wanna make a few comments just on, on it. First of all, it's, it's a non-motorized path, all right, it's for pedestrian and bicycles only. And the reason we did this section first is number one, it's on the county road. The amount of additional right-of-way is not even as big as this room, I don't think. We're not crossing any streams, creeks, or rivers, nothing like that. We are connecting two commercial nodes, right? So the four forty-one Hog Mountain area is one of comprehensive plans, long plans, commercial areas. And you're already seeing activity out there now, and you're probably gonna see a lot more in the next twenty-four to forty-eight months. That stretch, the area is probably one of the more photographed areas of Oconee County that you could find. We had the funding to complete the entire section. Had we gone another area, it truly would have been a trail of nowhere, cause we wouldn't have made a destination with what funding we did have available. Had we gone another area, it truly would have been a trail to nowhere because we wouldn't have made a destination with what funding we did have available. I will say that ninety percent of all the feedback I got has been negative. And all I can say is message received. John Daniel ain't interested in another trail for a while. That's just me though.
I get a lot of questions too about, what are you doing? You know, so yeah, I'm waiting on that.
Well, I think that, uh, I kind of look at it differently. Of course, yeah, I, I see all social media, but.
Well, this ain't social media.
I'm not getting.
I don't even count that.
Yeah, so that's, uh, that's a avenue for anybody that wants to complain to complain, which is fine. Uh, I think that, uh, if you don't have any more appetite, you know, maybe it's not a point.
Not, I mean, that's what we're wanting, but if everybody's good, I'll.
But I think that the trail to nowhere is, is appropriate, uh, you know. Uh, I, I look at maybe, maybe the word we use for a trail, but maybe the sidewalk might be more appropriate. Uh, I would think that, uh, some connectivity, because this will take, uh, connect Butler's Crossing to, to back toward what I used to call the Stone Shield. Uh, so if you're looking for connectivity, if you, if you take a look at the map, the, in my mind, of course, the common sense is, doesn't necessarily always come sense, but if you're trying to connect neighborhoods and have connectivity, I would think the next segment, whichever year, decade you ever do it, would be through the Daniel Ridge Road. Because then you would look, it would connect back over to the Quick Trip where you have a sidewalk over there, and then you would have a complete loop. Now, I travel that road a lot, and that Mars Hill Road and the Connector, there's a lot of people using those sidewalks. Not so much to get somewhere, but to recreate, exercise, walk the dog, whatever. Not everybody can afford, you know, membership to the local gym. So they take advantage of what's available, whether it's our parks, but that way with those sidewalks, they can just hop right out there outside their home and take off jogging or walking. So I'm not opposed to it being continued. I would like for us to reconsider, uh, the next segment, uh, to where it's actively connecting and be a circle, a side, you know, a circle. Uh, the, what you said was the next segment was from the high school to Dawson Park.
Dawson Park to the high. Well, it's identified in the plan as the next segment.
So it wouldn't even come to Butler's Crossing?
No, it's.
It would already exist in there. You gotta fix the sidewalk up at Oconee High School.
Okay.
So we'd go from there. I think the next phase would be, so that whole phase over to Wendell Dawson's broke down in like three phases, I think.
Yeah.
One gets you to O V P, and then you go the rest of the way on that next one. But I do think in the master plan, from the feedback from the recreation board was they wanted to get to a park before, but that's definitely something we can look at.
Well, I think connection to people where they live is important, you know. I mean, if you got a nice sidewalk or multi-use trail, whatever you want to call it, going to the park, but they live, you know, half mile down Daniel Ridge Road, then they're gonna have to get in a car to drive somewhere to get on the sidewalk. That doesn't make sense. But I, that, that's just my thought. I drive that area of the county a good bit, and, um, I think that, um, yeah, it's, uh, maybe, maybe the word trail is maybe a multi-use trail is maybe, maybe we should have said a sidewalk, you know.
Most people, whatever keeps me from getting to see that, like.
Well, yeah. Well, people say, when did y'all decide that? I say, well, the citizens of Oconee County twenty years ago decided that. And it's been part of the comprehensive plan every time it's been updated. So, I mean, it's not something that was just thought up.
Yeah.
Uh, over the last, last year.
I think the, I think the trail actually came from where it's bicycle and pedestrian, where it's sidewalk can never be designed only for pedestrian.
Yeah, typically a five-foot sidewalk, once you start getting to the eight-foot, ten, twelve-foot segments, that is more path, trail, whatever.
Well, that's fine. You can call it an eight-foot sidewalk, too.
I do. You think that works?
At least that's what most people have calculated, you know, a trail is everywhere you're going. But a sidewalk is that. And, and John, is this a good point, kind of bring up the other one, what I talked about? Uh, you know, with the conversation about sidewalks and trails, um, I think I did cross my mind, we have, what we currently have is street light taxing districts, is that correct? Where an existing neighborhood wants to have street lights, they can tax themselves and put in street lights. Why can't we have something similar if a neighborhood wants to do sidewalks? Because we have a lot of.
Let, let me just say today, our ordinance actually would accommodate any public improvements that we want to make, water lines, sewer lines, sidewalks, anything.
So say an existing neighborhood like Northwest Woods, been there for fifty years. If, if they want to put in sidewalks, they could set up a special tax district for them, for that neighborhood currently.
Yeah.
Okay.
As long as it's a, as long as it kind of fits into the category of things that governments do, obviously sidewalks are.
All right, so is all the details in there? So if somebody walked up to John now, so here's a, the new list if you want a sidewalk in your neighborhood?
It's more specific for street lights because we were doing those all the time. We might have to go back and look, but at one point, y'all may remember this, we actually proposed, um, uh, special tax districts for water lines, I think, in Northwest Woods and, uh, Hickory Hills. And then the board decided they want to go, I, I think, just the direction of putting them in themselves. But yeah, that, it, it's there, and we changed that from a street light tax district to more a general thinking that this kind of thing would happen, but, you know, sometimes it takes decades, not years.
Okay, well, I, I didn't know it existed, you know, 'cause I knew that, uh, you know, if somebody in a older neighborhood, they wanted to do that, uh, have an option, uh, if they wanted to go that way. Well, that's good to know that. Well, if we get any, if they start knocking down your door-walk sidewalks, then we have a way for that to accommodate them right. Thank you.
That's generally what I'll say. You talk to your neighbors about the right-of-way, and then typically is that funded by the government and then paid back through the streetlights. So that's the other thing, we just have to be careful of. If we had ten neighborhoods coming one time, somehow get all the neighbors to agree.
Well, yeah, that's, that's always a challenge, but could you not do some, maybe some, some saving up some money a little bit, or do you have to do? I know streetlights don't cost a lot of money, but.
Get a running, let the subdivision get a running start, in other words, yeah.
Build up an account and then put the sidewalk?
I think so.
That's good to hear. Thank you.
One of the things I would encourage is if we're gonna have any major road or utility improvements, that that needs to be part of it. You know, looking down the road, you know, fifteen, twenty years, whatever that is, make sure we're not putting something in like that, then a few years later tear it out and start over again. With all the stuff we got, we got messed up and portioned, right?
I, I do agree with Amy that Daniel's Bridge, in my mind, would be the next, because that's another you cross from the Water Creek down there, and it gets, so that would be a very long term saving up for our projects. And that wouldn't even, I don't know what that would cost. But I'd rate that as the next, you can get the most impact, the one way that's supposedly.
Well, some future, we want to fight that.
If we do some of the stuff we've been talking about, we're gonna be helping a bunch of awards in the future.
What?
I said, if we do, we did this, this, kind of like my, my experience with North Oconee High School.
Yeah.
Going through that.
Yeah.
And all these other superintendents and board members never had to deal with it.
Oh, yeah, yeah. And a lot of folks today still don't believe we needed a second.
Well, that's why thirty to forty trailers on the school property sure does justify it.
Oh, yeah.
Five-minute break.
Oh, sure. Worth the zone of it.
All right, we'll, uh, we'll head and come back in order. Next item is transportation, so you should have, uh, three legal size papers for each of the different areas. We'll go over state projects first. These are projects funded solely by the state. First is State Route three sixteen at Jim Daniel Burger Lane for the Oconee Connector. Most of these projects have been bundled. Archer Western has been awarded the contract. Construction will start this year with completion in twenty twenty-eight. Next is, uh, four forty-one from Morgan Cantaline to Bishop, which is a four-lane, you know, that road. Design started back in two thousand nineteen, right-of-way in twenty twenty-three. Construction is starting, slated to start in twenty twenty-eight. Dow's Mill, Dow's Mill and Dow's Mill extension to State Route three sixteen, there's that interchange. Design started on that in twenty twenty-one, right-of-way is started in twenty twenty-four. They're also saying construction will start in twenty twenty-five. Then we have three sixteen at McNutt Street, which is designed as a right-in, right-out. They're showing right-of-way in twenty-six with construction in twenty-seven.
I thought they spoke to start construction on the driver services and all that.
Okay, so that, they started out just driver services coming, then they added state patrol. Now GBI is coming as well, so there was a little internal conflict on how that was gonna get divided up. So that project's been turned over to the state building authority, and they're working on design parameters. So there'll be three separate buildings in that.
Wow.
Next is State Route three sixteen at Mars Hill Road, which would be cul-de-sac. They're showing right-of-way in twenty-eight, construction in twenty thirty. Julian Drive, which is still to be determined, is showing right-of-way in twenty-seven, construction in twenty thirty. Three sixteen at Ten Loop, there's a project to rebuild that whole interchange. They're showing design starting in twenty thirty with no, uh, date for right-of-way or construction.
Where they're going to, how, how they.
I think they're gonna do more of a diamond on that side where the strip center is. You have to turn, coming from low, you have to turn left to get on the loop, go back. The whole intersection is gonna get reworked.
It'd be nice if they were coming from U G A, but then go up on the bridge and circle back around, step down, traffic light.
So maybe talk about the flow, is that everything?
No, not this time. I think still on the May Fourth long term and the unfortunate note. Cause I'm not sure there's gonna be a state money for that for quite some time. Maybe the State Route fifteen, which is a bypass of Watkinsville, designed I think they were the contract, couldn't find for sure. Have you seen the, they were the, they were taking bids for design consultants on that. It should be awarded by now, but they're showing right-of-way starting in twenty-six. Um, and then May Fourth has funds allocated between twenty twenty-eight and twenty fifty-one for construction. State Route fifty-three and four forty-one, that's the, there's a project to redo that interchange as well. So right where the Mars Hill, uh, the experiment station project had ended, there's a project on the books to rework that whole interchange as well. That's not scheduled till twenty forty-seven with design, twenty forty-nine with right-of-way, and twenty fifty-one will be construction. Uh, State Route fifty-three, which will pick up from, um, where Experiment Station Widen stops to get, uh, up to New Street, is still to be determined. And then US seventy-eight, State Route ten will be repaved from the Walk to the Clark Cantaline sometime this year. These projects are joint projects with G-Daw, where we have some skin in the game of the public. We got State Route fifty-three at Snowsmill, Rocky Branch, that construction contract has been awarded to E R Snell. They're gonna start construction this year with completion in the first quarter of twenty twenty-six. Michael Bridge, it raised Church Road, uh, we are in right-of-way acquisition now, expect construction in twenty twenty-six. Bishop Falls Parkway, the north and south connection, all that's still to be determined. A lot of that project was driven by, um, need with U N G about expansion. We're not sure where they're at, or if this project's even gonna be feasible in the future. So we may even take this off our list for a while till we get a better determination. What we personally think it'll be is just a different configuration. I don't know if we'll cross that creek. That's the biggest portion of that, uh, construction expense to get across there. This is the current widening that you're experiencing this morning when you're trying to get here. E R Snell's doing that. Third quarter of this. That should be twenty twenty-five, right? Current widening is scheduled to be done in the third quarter of this year, not twenty-six. Just feel like I have to, if he might ask you this time, it's eighteen more months, no matter when they ask you.
Well, we could ask, just wait a minute.
Uh, it's our intent to do that. It'll be a little bit different project since that is a state route. Um, so what we'll need, we'll probably, the idea, I'll start probably working on that design project sometime this first or second quarter. Do the design and do the install this winter. Uh, we got, we want to make sure construction's complete. We ran, we ran into a little issue during the planning of the other time. With that construction company, they, even though they were supposed to be done a lot earlier, we planted trees and they got us a few conflicts with them, so we want to try to avoid anything like that.
But eventually it will be landscaped.
All these are Oconee County projects. Snowsmill at Lane Creek is around about. We will award that contractor on the fourth of February. This is a T-splosts project. New High School Union Church, we expect construction to start this year, and that one as well. It's currently final design and right-of-way acquisition. T-splosts funded as well. Next, we'll go to Assamale Coliferry. Then Coal Springs, uh, Snowsmill and Hacoff, and then North Ford at Lane Creek. What we're trying to do is complete all the right-of-way and design on those remaining three, so we got shoulder-ready projects. So as funding comes available, we can get, um, extra money from the state on some of the, we got projects that are due this term at least. So all that, designing right-of-way should be done on those this year. We have a project on Atlanta Highway at Burson to replace the signal, that'll be done this year as well. They're currently doing a, at Miller's Lake Drive, over the lake there, a coal replacement. Will be done this year as well. Our original T-splosts request. How we kind of did T-splosts, even splosts, is last time you figure out what you think you're gonna collect, and then you go through and do your budgets and pick your projects. And then you gross that up to put on the referendum. In the past, it used to be that you had to, you were limited by either time or the amount of money that was on the referendum. During the development of our budget on this one, the state law changed so that you could just go five years without any penalty for over collection. So basically, what we thought we would collect was fifty-two million for county projects and almost eight for the city. We're right on track with that. We're right on track with that, so everything we got planned, we feel like we should be able to finish it up. Good things on that collection. And I would kinda talk.
We have some more questions, if we so, hopefully we make the decision about where you're up in the T S P L O S.
Very soon, so collection will end on three thirty one and twenty twenty eight. So that's one of the things we'll be bringing too, is when to get, get started on that. We got that ending in twenty twenty eight as well as S P L O S ending at twenty twenty seven. So right, those are right up, funded up next to, next to each other. So kinda the question is gonna be is what's the timing on going to the voters?
State law changes requires those type of referents to be put on the general election, so the primary, let's discuss.
There was some discussion, but it's still the same as, there's a sorry, there's two different times you can do it per year.
The primaries?
Yeah, and you can still do a special, I think, on the off years. I do believe, we gotta do some checking. Andy, you know, pop your head on how early you can get before the expiration date?
You gotta have it done three months before your expiration.
So if we wanted to go spring of twenty six for S P L O S?
I think we can, I'll have to verify that, but I think so.
So that, that's kinda what is in my mind, we can chat on, be going for S P L O S renewal in spring of twenty six. T S P L O S is fall of twenty six, just cause that's one of the major elections. You still have twenty twenty seven to try again if something went real wrong. If there's uh any thoughts on that, the list right here. Everybody kinda okay with that schedule? So we'll kinda develop a detailed schedule on how to proceed that out. So we're gonna get a little direction too on Coal Springs, yeah, State Route fifty three and Clock Feltor. So we went through the federal procedure to select a bad design consultant for. Looking at alternatives at, at this location. There's really no likely state funding that's gonna be available. And federal funding after dealing with these last two roundabouts, take that whole one more time and a lot more money. So going the federal routes, but this type of project is not something I would recommend that we do. We did what is called an encroachment permit on the roundabouts in front of the administration building. Where we had, we did the design, G D I approved it, and then we did the construction. We built that roundabout for roughly two and a half million dollars, design was about a hundred thousand, and we did.
Two point two?
Yep, two point two million. And we were done in twelve months from start to finish on design.
With a concurrent project right next door.
We have been working on these two roundabouts on fifty three, probably getting on our fourth year. And it's been the most frustrating experience.
I would say twenty million dollars is probably your number for future federal aid. I wouldn't do anything less than twenty million.
So, so what's happened is, is the consultant came up with this, it's been meeting with public work. To get that design consultant with the district office about doing a similar to what we did at the admin university encroachment permit. They have given us tender approval that we could do an encroachment permit in the smaller category, so we could do similar to what we did at the administration building. So that would be a hundred percent construction and design funded by the county. And there currently is no funding for construction in the near future. Now with T S P L O S and coming back up, that could be something that's on there. So the question is, do we go ahead and get a consultant on board to take us all the way to shovel ready project with the permit? On a encroachment permit and have that ready to go in case sixteen billion dollars surplus, they say, hey. You get a billion out of county county, we got some stuff ready. If you got anything ready to go, we can fund it. So that would entail bringing a consultant on, do the construction design, get all that approved, like you got, so that we're ready to go to build. Or we can sit back and wait until funding starts showing, showing itself in English or anything. Any thoughts y'all got? If not, we're gonna have to pave around that block and scene so the people can continue to go around. I bet those new spike strips are gonna take care of that. So, so as I mentioned, when we, the way S P L O S used to be done, you figure out how much, what you think you're gonna make, and then you gross up your ass. We're not running into a situation where you have to stop, or stop collections earlier, we're doing referendum. Evidently during the planning process for this S P L O S twenty one, the law changed that if you do have an M O U with all the cities. Then you can collect for the whole six years. So that was not in my mind when we originally did this first ass. So we, we originally went to voters after for sixty four point six million dollars. With fifty five million being for county projects and eight point nine for city projects. What we really were expecting to collect was forty four point five million, with seven point one for city, or a total of fifty one point seven. And that was based on our projections for what S P L O S was gonna bring there. You should have a little sheet in your packet too, that shows an estimated collections from three percent growth of remaining years of, of the S P L O S. So, I got on here, we're gonna collect seventy two million dollars total. So not only do we have more than the original referendum, we have a lot more than we budgeted for project. This is based on sales tax growth, just the cost of products, you got the inflationary portion of it, and then retail expansion. And that significant amount coming from Costco. And I said it was a big habit, habit for Costco, and I was the one that hit the brakes a lot of times, so. Good thing about, good, good thing you kept pushing, I think we got a great deal out of it, and it's, it's turned out, I would've never imagined this amount of money from one single. It's been amazing to watch.
Make it easy for the referendum.
Yes. So, so what I've done is kinda looked at where we had on some projects, and this is nothing more than a discussion starter. We need to take some time to digest this, and then get better cost estimates on some of the projects that we have outstanding. But what I'm showing is under the O B P current debt for Geo Bond. We have about one point three million dollars in interest right now. If we assign that with a little bit of the savings from another project, we can pay this debt off in this referendum. Not just, well, it's not scheduled to be paid for in twenty thirty three. So if we're able to do that, that's what the board wants to do. That takes all that debt off the next S P L O S, which opens up some conversations we haven't heard about possibly bonding for the actual buildings. Water resources, we've got a. Capacity upgrade we gotta do for a couple million dollars at one of our retail nodes. We put a couple million in there to help pay for that. Roads, we can continue with our two million dollars that we've been putting in for paving for F Y twenty six and twenty seven. And then still have three million dollars left for improved road improvements on Rocky Branch, including parts. Whether that's roundabout, traffic lights, and all the upgrades to. Plantation. Another hundred thousand for man protection, fire rescue. We end up paying for three projects out of general fund that were scheduled for their S P L O S. So even though that's only three point two million, that gives them an extra significant amount more money to complete the projects they had. Possibly give them a different drug or start on it for the future. Restore properties, we bumped up just a little bit. If we collect seven, seven to seven and a half million on the admin building, that takes a lot of pressure off the next S P L O S. We've got seven million dollars in there, I expect additional interest that could go there to help us get all the way to that seven five number. Restore, mention that, broadband. We originally had five million dollars for broadband, and we don't pay, but we only spent two hundred thousand dollars of that. So we're working with um charter with their program significantly less. And there was also offer money that came in where we used some of that to offset that cost. So that project is totally done, so all those funds are available for reassignment. General facilities we left roughly, they about the same, at four point three one five. Courthouse renovations, we got six and a half million, or six hundred fifty thousand, and then for Parks and Rec. We originally anticipated one and a half million dollars for. One point one million dollars for the additional acorns, remember this was done back a while ago. And then the new exit at one and a half million dollars for a total of two point seven. Based on some recent events, we will not have to pay for that during that reasoning process for that piece of property. We do get an exit back to Parkway, so that's no longer needed. And we're showing a full three million dollar den right now to complete the tennis court expansion. Also twelve million for construction of Dawson Park. And then for the sheriff's office, we're showing increasing their funding for twenty six, twenty seven, and twenty eight to help them get caught up. We originally did this budget, vehicle costs have gone up significantly, so their planned purchases had to drop to keep in the dollar amount. So we think this amount will be significant, helping to catch up on that, get that cleared. So we also have been putting money in the capital fund, and here's, here's a list of what we're showing as assignments for. So courthouse renovation, we have three million dollars set aside, so that'll go with the six and a half, or six hundred fifty thousand of S P L O S. Should be more than enough to give that project. The firms are fixtures and equipment, the court system has about quarter million dollars in the law library. That they can use to buy test and equipment that they need. Very top line. We got money set aside for those design and right away purchase for the two roundabouts. One of those is already finished, but others being probably a very overestimate, we're just trying to be prepared. Intersection safety, the design of those five roundabouts that we're talking about, we'll get a little bit more on that project. And we also have two and a half million dollars in this account to help fund one of those roundabouts. Home amount paid, two million, which has already been spent. We got one million dollars for to complete the design of Dawson Park. With another three million to add with the S P L O S funds to get us up to the fifteen million that we're estimating, or that we have set aside for this project. We also have ten million set aside for the field services building, which will combine fleet services, road department, and water resources, field, field teams. That'll allow us to surplus two more buildings as well as get out of that lease. Part of the reason we have this money here is by surplus of those properties when we build administrative buildings. We have three million set aside for Heritage Park. It's a farm far away, we got six hundred thousand for that project again. We probably need to look at this, taking this off our list for a while. Couple of projects at Landfield, the six hundred and two is what we owe Charter left, that's been paid, so that's off the books at this point. Everything below that line is part of our lifecycle management program, where we're putting money aside each year, so when it comes time to purchase it, we got the money set with the name. The bottom sections of stuff we ordered or started the project in F Y twenty four that didn't get done, so all those will be spent in future years as available. So this is kinda the layout, there's opportunities to move stuff around, if we're looking at it, hey, this, we don't wanna spend this much here or that much there. So I'll be glad to answer any questions, we'll get some time to digest that, and as we get more firm numbers, better understanding of numbers, we'll come back and. Do it. Any questions on where we're at?
I would just say on the S P L O S app, you have to say thank you to all the people who come and shop in this county. Locals and uh the public that are coming to us. That's what I agree with all about, some of the other things I've said, is that people like coming. You know that this is huge on the horses. Being first in a position like this, this body.
Did you tell some of the younger folks about that payoff fifty years from now?
Yes.
Okay, so you got the.
It's actually on, on the financial statements, so we're tracking that every year, so.
Can remind me, how much is that?
Twelve million, is it twelve million?
Twelve million dollars.
Okay. So you young folks don't.
Fifty years from now, you're getting a check for twelve million, spend it wisely.
Probably about two bliss vehicles in.
Any immediate questions on that? So as y'all digested just all that business, we get, get into detail. None of this is actually stone. This, this is just a dry run to show the potential that we have.
So one thing I would also just mention, not, not on there, but we're completing the Cause Creek upgrade, that almost a thirty million dollar project there. Um, and that will carry wastewater treatment from that side of things once, once we do the discharge in one or four decades. But then you have, so what we're looking at from the water resource side, infrastructure, we have, we have a, have a sewer model which kind of identifies where our bottlenecks will be, where the growth nodes are. So what you're gonna see probably the next few years on the enterprise fund itself on capital side of things is where do we need to go from a six inch line to a ten inch line to accommodate that, where do we need to upgrade these lift stations to accommodate what the new flows are gonna be? Then again, the decommissioning, the LAS, so the big lift in the, in the water resource side of things is almost completed right now, but then we're gonna look at these smaller components of the overall health of the system.
Move on to fiscal.
Alright. So I believe the last time we updated our fiscal ordinance was twenty twenty. Um, we like to look at these every now and then just to kind of look at the realities of our situation. Most of the proposed, proposed changes you have in there um, are just cleanups that Melissa, her department is seeing that either don't work or just redundant, redundant items going forward. Uh, our overall goal in this, we're trying to adapt to an increasingly competitive vendor marketplace. And quite frankly, uh, demand far exceeds our supply right now. And so we are having a very hard time. And I've, I've assumed all our, I know, um, you know, with all the other counties and cities are having a hard time just getting vendors to come out to do work or even give us quotes on things, so. Uh, some vendors are refusing to come to the site to give us a quote or are demanding a fee just to come out to give us a quote. You know, commodity's easy, you know, a wrench is a wrench is a wrench is a wrench, but if you need somebody to identify what a roof leak situation looks like, that might be a three hour ordeal for them to do. So we're just adapting, you know, but the cost honestly has just increased. So anyway, the main component in this is, is the table that you have in there, which is our new, our new spending limits of authority. Uh, it'll make us more competitive and adaptable within our marketplace. This requires me to, um, these aren't significant changes, but there's still capping at a hundred thousand dollars with the administrative spending. No difference than it currently is. There is a move and has been for the past two years in state law to change the public works construction um, limit from a hundred thousand dollars to two hundred fifty thousand dollars, in part because that hasn't changed, I believe, in twenty five ish years. And the, uh, the construction costs have changed in twenty five years, so it's a little bit of a, of a recognition of the current side, but what this will do is um, it will, it increases efficiency of our departments to deal with things and to get vendors out there. It does require a little more oversight on my part and the finance side of things, just to make sure that we're still getting competitive bids and we're making, we're not overly reliant on, on one contractor. But, you know, quite frankly, between the great recession and some other factors where there may have been eight suppliers or vendors for a certain trade, or maybe two now, and the competition is fierce. So, um, some of the other changes, that, that's the, the major consequence, or at least from a staff perspective going forward. And of course, anything over a hundred thousand dollars, I have to take to this board anyway, no change from how it was before. Other, other changes, there was a little peculiar requirement for our banking RFPs, just the way it was initiated. We just, um, struck that just to line it up with any other RFP, uh, that we've had going forward, which would be initiated by staff if, if required. Uh, remove the ability to have facsimile stamps on financial documents. That's just a good housekeeping audit measure. Um, change deposit requirements from thirty days to three days. And, um, and then update competitive bid requirements for multi-year con- contracts. And then, um, add a sole source option. We have, we have a lot of, um, items that are more of a sole source. And then, so example, if we suck them, that is, that is the fleet burning of, uh, the fire, the fire department, and so going to suck them directly would be a sole source option. So there's a few other of those items, or either those or the, uh, the licensed contractor for them helps, helps, uh, expedite some of the contract matters. But those are the general overall thing to the change. No significant other than just overall bid limit requirements and vendor quotes.
Need clarification. Uh, anytime I say something about positive or negative, my ears hurt. Help, help me understand what your time to do, what, what you said, the summary of change, you said you're gonna remove the requirement for us to approve those?
So.
I'm sorry.
So the first po- policy curtain says we just wanna have to come to the board to make a great vote to even go to RFP on banking. There's no other
Okay.
relationship with it as required to come to this board for.
But the ultimate decision still rests with the board?
Yeah, that's correct.
Well, it just, the summary was
Any other questions? We'll probably put this on our February one session. So you've got still more time to digest it.
Is this document on website?
It is.
It is? Under what, um, department? Is that under the financial or?
So it's currently attached to this agenda, I believe it's under the finance department. If it's not, we can, we can, it is.
I just talked about the general website.
Yeah, it's on, it's under the finance department.
Finance, okay.
We're also looking at some possible personnel, personnel policy updates. Most, a lot of this is working cleanup. Update or reflect current policy, whether we change the policy, get that integrated into the full document. Call the other items is, is comp time, use of comp time before taking, using vacation or sick leave to kind of get those off the books. We're also, there's seven additions to Veterans Day, it's a holiday, paid holiday. Probably the bigger one is investigating due to a PTO, personal time off program versus sick versus vacation at time. And also looking at a lead buyback program. So that, that's gonna take a lot more study, research, so HR's working on getting that together. We're looking at bringing in a focus groups from employees and going through and seeing how that impacts the work. We hope to have this before, start the next fiscal year.
Lead and sick leave or just push?
Just putting it in a big bucket where you can, you got this much time, you can use it, and then when that reaches a certain level, if you can get over that level, you can get a check for that time. Lead by that.
Can we kind of allow our employees to donate, sick leave or anything relevant for us? I know that, um, in our situation, I was before, you know, we had cases where there were employees who were battling a serious illness or whatnot, they used up all their sick leave gave other employees an opportunity to donate time to those employees. So just a thought, it'd be another, um, benefit, um, I don't know how that happens. Here in the county, I know that we had some employees who were battling cancer or whatnot, they were using up their sick leave and, um, some of the old timers had a lot of sick leave that built up that we couldn't use or wouldn't ever use, and we would lose once we retired, so we were allowed people to donate to other employees that they were in need, real need, not, not because they had a cough or, you know, a scratch or throat. I'm sorry, I'm serious, you know, button questions. Just a thought.
So.
Do you have a copy of that policy?
Not anymore.
We may check with that institution and see if they'll share that with you.
Well, I don't.
So, so I'll say I'm supportive of that as a general, um, you know, operational guideline. The trick that we have to look in more further, especially if you have a disparity of salaries. And so each bank, you know, the one eight hours is not necessarily.
Yeah, well, my case is always a plus on my because I'm getting it a lot cheaper.
So, yeah, there's, there's, there's a few devils in that detail, but we'll, we'll run that down though. But I think, I think as a general, I don't know if that's a perk for as much as just a care, care of the employee. I think, I think that's a worthwhile to ever look at.
Don't make time to me, but there were
Right.
people on the front line that, um.
Well, you know, I mean, it's, it's a sad fact of life that employees get significant illnesses and probably could use it as assistance.
Alright, now we're on health insurance, so just looking for a little overall direction. I'll say I muffed up the last presentation we did, so I'll kind of level that back and see where we're headed. To me, we have two choices before us, which is to take a hard look at self-funding to make a final decision whether to go self-funded or to stay fully insured like we are now. John Daniel thinks we need to take a hard run at self-funded. I've been the push behind this the whole time. When I came in office in two thousand seventeen, started working with, with the current broker on investigating going to self-funded. We went out and visited other companies, specifically Walt Densley, we went over and talked with their HR and general manager, kind of talked through how they did it, what it looked like. It wasn't a very common thing that people were doing at that time. And some of the people we talked to, we were right on the cusp of the life count or the, the coverage count had made it good or bad to go that way. We've continued to push since two thousand seventeen, taken a look, have to look at, look at it. It's a lot more common in the workplace. County's smaller, life council we got are already done it. It's very common in private se- not very common, but it's more common in the private sector now than it was in the past. The amount of data we can get in a fully insured situation is limited. So we don't own the data, so understanding where our claims are, how to help with those claims, control costs and that kind of thing is a lip area. And going self-funded is not something you wanna do on a learning curve. Too much at risk to the employees. If we mess it up, we can get ourselves in a financial situation as well. So I, I sort of doubled down this last year on pushing through to figure out. Kind of getting tired of talking and asking about it, so might have been a little frustration in there. I don't know whether self-funding is worth looking at or not. We had somebody come from outside, like a hundred thousand foot view, explain to us self-insurance and what steps we would need to take to go through that. So the, the first one was getting a ten thousand foot view on based on the data we can get, does it make financial sense to go further down the self-funded road? So we went out and tried to get proposals from firms that could offer that. We got, interviewed three firms during that process. A firm was letting to give us a go-no-go for the next step, which is where we've been at a few months ago. So we gotta get in the weeds on our claims. We got to take this detailed information actually out to the market to determine if we, what those numbers are really gonna be. They got a good guess, but don't know, devil's in the details, we gotta get into the details. To get the final and true cost of what it would take to go self-funded. So while maintaining the current program, without any interruptions, we gotta go look at contracts with administrators, um, prescription management things, um, we gotta do liability calculations for not only what we know is happening, but something called incurred but not reporting, reported claims. We gotta go look at actuaries and say that even though you got collecting this premium, there's probably still another million dollars worth of claims out there that ain't get your books yet. We gotta deal with the insurance commissioner for registration and meeting their regulations. And then negotiating with the administrator he would, we would file claims with and they would apply our, our plan to those payments. So all that's gonna have to happen is to produce a solid number where we would make as a board the decision. Uh, we're gonna stay fully insured or we're gonna go self-funded. And we decide go self-funded, then everything's ready to go. Contracts are ready, we vote, we start implementing at whatever timeframe is out there. If it's a no-go, we just continue with our current program and the whole thing, there's no, uh, no impact to the employees during this par- process. There's no additional liability incurred, no, um, during this period as well. If that's something group's not interested in, I get it. We're done talking about it, but that's what we're gonna do. I don't have a problem with that. What we will have to do at that point is do an RFP for current brokerage services, um, on the self-insured, on the fully insured program as well. Right now, we have an open RFP. If we decide the, the direction or consensus is let's continue down the investigation of self-funded, we need to vote on that RFP. If not, like I said, issue this, another RFP just to stay fully, fully insured brokerage type. The reason for the second one is it hasn't, it has not been the market in a very long time. The insurance market's been set up where the brokers have been paid by the insurance companies. And so I believe there needs to be some transparency in those fees, and I like, I want the, not that it hadn't been happening, but we understand what the broker's getting and that they work specifically for Boyd County and not, there's no learning lines of love to hear your thoughts on what you think.
I've had the chance to review this after the talk by the board meeting and spoke to a couple of different companies that have done the self-funded. Personally, I have been through that, through a different phase, but, um, it's a lot different now than it was twenty five years ago. So what I have found is that there are some benefits to it that are really not known to get involved in it, and one of them is, is remates back from drug companies. And so, you know, that can be a significant number. So I would be in favor of moving forward with the investigation of self-funded.
Well, I, I would make myself, no, I made the motion to try to keep this on the page, but I'm done. I had to change my mind, I, I think that the evolution of the insurance market out there starts with, and we need to stay abreast of what's available. And surely, I, I mean, especially, I mean, our responsibility is of, of this year as far as the dollars and cents. Don't need to forget that it's our employees and there's a human element to that, so there's some benefit that, that is not, uh, not available to us currently that would be under a self-insured program and certainly need to be considered.
Yeah, I mean, there's, you know, when we talked about that last time, there was just some confusion about what's good or bad on both of them. And I still don't know that I've got a clear picture of what's good or bad on it. So I, I'm not, I definitely don't wanna stop looking and making sure we do what's right for the employee, that's for sure. I mean, anything's good for them is good for us, that's for sure, and so I don't think we ought to stop looking to see what's best for them.
So we'll circle back up on the RFPs out there. I'll recirculate the information we had out earlier, if I got any questions, we'll see how we can get through it. Probably just put this on February one session. I said this meeting would be all day or doesn't matter much, just like we're gonna be there all day.
Well, you got one more item.
What's that?
Other item?
That's right.
We may not be.
All right, come on.
Well, I was teaching, but I do have a question, it, it does impact, uh, long-term, but with upgrades to, to Jimmy Daniel, we, we're gonna lose that recycling center over there on, so what's, what's the plans on that or thought on that?
Dome, that, that center dome is actually, goes on the other thing that we're out there.
Okay, so.
There's no, there's no property in that area that we've been able to locate that would be feasible for that.
Yeah, well, other items that's not major significance, but since we are celebrating the hundred and fifty years this year, I would like for us to look at some of our history that we have and possibly compile that into a presentation. Keep that on our website for everyone to view. And then, I know there are several people in the community that have different artifacts. Look at where to possibly, if we decide to store any of that in future generations, what to.
So, February twenty-second, there's a celebration event over at the, we get back in our house. Starts at ten, goes to four. Ten to four.
I found a map to the George Arch, I told Mark about this, anybody wants to come back and look at it, it's fascinating. It's a nineteen nineteen Soul's map of Rock County, and it has, for all the houses and the Prudential Insurance place. It's got all kinds of things marked on it, so if you ever wanna stop by and look at it, it's pretty fascinating.
Yeah, I mean, there was some ghosts down there for sure.
It is interesting to look at where the houses are located, it is.
Yeah.
And they're not spread out like they're.
And some of them are not where you think they are exactly.
So I'll kind of add next steps on the staff internal side is we'll sort of digest, circulate on this. There's some other elements that aren't really policy, but they're definitely strategic goals for the staff to do some of the efficiency work that we're doing. Lot on the building renovation maintenance side of things and getting more and more proactive on the, not just having buildings, but taking care of our buildings and what that entails. So we'll, on the staff side, come up with sort of a list of, overall, we have sort of the goals that we'll call these objectives and then some tactics and strategies underneath that. And ultimately break that back to you guys to adopt as a strategic plan for the, our work program going forward.
We'll get back again, kind of go back to this format.
The benefit, I think, of this format, maybe at the post previously, is we hear your policy direction, which is where it should flow down, we'll shoot that out to the departments and they can kind of work on their projects to align with your policy goals, and we'll break that back to you as we work them. Good information.
They're really good spots.
Six o'clock?
Yes, we have a joint meeting with board of cases starting at six, and we'll move in our town hall at six thirty. Hope to see everybody there.
In our, in our town.